Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the mayor and city council of the city of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broom. It is 7:30 PM. We have a quorum with council members Clay, Taylor, and Alan present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. At this time, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item on the agenda is the invocation that will be done by Chaplain Walker this evening.
Let us take a moment of silence and focus on the spiritual side of what it is that we do. As we gather, oh God, at this council meeting, in light of our past Memorial Day, and in the remembrance of what happened at Tulsa and other acts of violence in our country, help us to remember that we must always be alert to the possibilities of the eruptions of biased attitudes, judgments of and over our neighbors as evil, and to not be valued as precious gems of life. Above all, assist us to remember the nature of violence and its threat to our goal of creating and living in an inclusive, respectful, and hopeful community. We hope that we can live together in peace. We give thanks now for our mayor and councilmen as they lead us in this process of creating and executing more orderly society for College Park. May they be honest, straightforward, and model the beauties of all of us in College Park as being created equally. Quicken their minds and their hearts to be faithful for the spirit and the nature of their work. We give thanks for the heads of all our departments in city government, and all who are employed by the city as they seek to serve us on our behalf. It is our prayer that we leave this council meeting tonight with hope that we have changed and/or supported the forms, the rules, the laws, for more mutual self-respect and living above all with one another in peace and harmony. Be with us as we give testimony to the spiritual side of all life, particularly as it resides with us tonight. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Walker. All right, item number two, additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda. I have two additions. We're gonna need new business at 10A in regard to permission for a helicopter landing. I believe that's at the Brady Recreation Center, is that correct?
I believe it's at Badger Field.
Oh, I'm sorry, Badger Field, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, sorry. And item 10B, approval of the Fulton County T-Splopped IGA.
I move to approve those additions.
All right, is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Has Councilman Gay joined us? Yes, okay, all right, just want to make sure that we're, was that unanimous then, gentlemen? All right, thank you. All right, so item 3A is the regular session minutes from May 17th.
I move to approve as presented.
Is there a second? I think I heard Councilman Allen first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Item 3B is approval of the workshop session minutes from May 17th.
Also moved as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Aye.
Thank, I'll take that as a second, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. That is unanimous as well. And the special called meeting minutes from May 6th, we need to approve those as well. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as well.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Item 4A is the presentation of a proclamation to Ensign Brianna Alexis Willis for her commissioning at the 140th commencement ceremony of the United States Coast Guard Academy. Give me one moment to get to that.
I believe Alexis is here, should be able to attend on this on Zoom.
Ms. Willis, are you with us?
There they are.
All right, there we go. Good evening. Let me go ahead and read it. The City of College Park Proclamation, Ensign Brianna Alexis Willis. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of College Park recognizes the graduation and commissioning of Ensign Brianna Alexis Willis and her accomplishments at the United States Coast Guard Academy. And whereas Ensign Willis completed four years of intensive academic, physical, and leadership training resulting in a Bachelor of Science in Management. Following graduation, Ensign Willis has been assigned to USCGC Northland in Portsmouth, Virginia. And whereas Ensign Willis was tendered an appointment in the United States Coast Guard on April 26, 2017. She graduated and became a commissioned officer on May 19, 2021. During her training, she received the prestigious RADM Ned W. Sprou Award, given to a cadet who has overcome, persevered, and shown commitment to achieve. And whereas Ensign Willis also received the Gold Star Academic Recognition for maintaining a 3.1 GPA for four consecutive semesters. She also earned a Bronze Star for her exceptional score on the physical fitness exam. And whereas Ensign Willis was one of only two African-American women out of 240 cadets in the graduating class of 2021. And whereas Ensign Willis was presented her commission by the Commander and Chief of the United States of America, President Joseph R. Biden, and her brother, 2017 graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy Lieutenant Rex Willis Jr. at the 140th commencement ceremony of the United States Coast Guard Academy. Now therefore, be proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of College Park recognizes Ensign Brianna Alexis Willis for her outstanding accomplishments at the United States Coast Guard Academy, proclaimed the 7th day of June, 2021. We could not be prouder of you. Congratulations. It is exceptional. Your accomplishments are exceptional, and you make us proud.
You know, Mayor, it just occurred to me, I wonder if Sabrina had some really good pics of the president and the head of the Coast Guard, and also Alexis' brother. Maybe we could put one of them on the LED in front of City Hall.
That's a great idea.
Think that's a great idea. Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, please. Good evening. First off, I want to say thank you, Mayor, Council, for recognizing me this evening. It's a complete honor. It is an honor to me and my family. My family has called College Park home for 40 years, and the city of College Park has played an integral role in shaping me into the person that I am today, and I'm truly grateful for that. Through my experiences with community programs such as Park of Recreation and Favor Tribe Program, I have learned a sense of community, teamwork, and service. These ideals have helped shape me, have shaped the career path that I'm on today.
Well said, Alexis.
I'm sorry, the connection had broken up.
I said, well said.
I have a few more words to say, I'm sorry. I stand before you today, not only as an officer in the United States Coast Guard, but a product of College Park. I will continue to strive to be the, I will continue to strive to be the best, to make College Park proud. Thank you again for this proclamation, and I will continue to make College Park proud. And the Coast Guard motto is Semper Fi, and is Latin for "always ready," and I'm always ready to serve. Thank you again.
Thank you, and we are so grateful for your service and so proud of you. Thank you.
I just like say thank you very much, and you're a credit to the city of College Park, and appreciate all that you have accomplished.
All right, I think someone has the meeting playing in the background. If you might at least turn that down, that would be a little bit helpful, because I think we're getting a little bit of feedback. We're going to move on to item 4B, introduction of new employees by Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, Dr. Dwight Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like to present the 2021 New Hires for the month of May 2021, and they are Robin Polk, jailer, Junior Klein, electrical line worker, Vidi Gahave, project engineer, Rudy Davis, police recruit, John Swills III, police recruit, Kimberly Holmes, EDP clerk, and Tammy Jackson, accountant.
Welcome, everybody.
Absolutely, we welcome them all. Thank you, Dr. Baker.
My pleasure.
Next on the agenda is a public comment. And I believe our deputy clerk is handling that this evening. Or, I'm sorry, did I get it, did I get ahead of us? No, we're doing, okay. Okay, so we're doing remarks to citizens, right?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And the comments are as follows, and I'll start my timer as well for three minutes. First comment comes from Mr. Tom Coleman. Dear Mayor and Council, we wish to join the many members of our city in hoping for a speedy recovery for Officer Ivory Morris. The injuries Officer Morris sustained are yet another reminder of the dangers our police officers take in protecting College Park. From Mr. Tom Coleman, Elaine Murphy at 1993 Cambridge Avenue, College Park, Georgia. Second is from Pastor Marjorie A. Dent. Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Marjorie A. Dent, and I reside at 4021 Jesse A. Dent Jr. Road, College Park for the past 22 years. I have been a citizen of College Park for 46 years. I am requesting that Jesse A. Dent Jr. Road remain closed at both ends, as it is at present, to prevent through traffic from the new development and progress. Most of the residents there are seniors, and added traffic will be jeopardizing their safety, health, and general well-being. Please take this request into consideration. Thank you kindly, Pastor Marjorie A. Dent. Next comment, excuse me, next comment is from Mr. Wilson in chemistry, not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, junior. And his comments start, "Good neighbor superstar shout-out. Just wanted to send a good neighbor superstar shout-out to my neighbors, College Park District 4 Councilman Rodrick the Great Neighbor Gay, and the legendary Leon the Tree Man Williams for coming to our rescue and aid this past Memorial Day when a tree fell on our home. Gotta say, Facebook family, God is most deaf good all the time. These young men were truly God-sent that day. It's really refreshing to know that a great public servant like Councilman Rodrick Gay and great neighbor like Leon Williams understand the true meaning of servant-hood. God bless you. #ThatTalentMan, #Blessed, #Grateful." Next comment reads from an anonymous resident. Good evening. My home is located on Williamsburg Drive, War 4. We have a big problem with other residents on this street parking on the street, instead of in their driveways. I'm not sure if they don't care or don't understand how hard it is to have to drive on the left side of the road in order to get to my house. I'm sure if the shoe was on the other foot, they would want the cars off of the street, not only being inconvenienced trying to get to my house. I'm very concerned about my property value being less because the streets look like a deep parking lot. Forgive my language. But I thought we are supposed to park in our driveways. If we need more room, we're supposed to expand our driveways. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Your help in this matter would be greatly appreciated." Last comment reads from Ms. Beverly Bearden, "Tree concern. Good afternoon. My name is Beverly Bearden, and I live at 4371 York Road, College Park, Georgia. I have lived at this address for 34 years. Last month, I had a tree to fall in my yard from the creek that is on one side of my house. I am concerned about whether it is the responsibility of the city of College Park to maintain the creek basin. This is not the only tree that has fallen. I have had several trees to fall from this creek, which caused damage to my home, along with the expense of me having to file insurance claims and/or having trees removed from my property. I am on a fixed income and can't afford to constantly have trees removed from my property that's coming from this creek. I am asking the city of College Park to please assist me with the cleanup of this tree, and to assist with making sure that the city is doing its part in maintaining the creek basin so that future trees will not be a threat to my safety and well-being. Your immediate attention will be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Beverly Bearden."
And that was the last one you received, Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
All right, if there is anyone who wishes to speak for one minute, you can go ahead and raise your hand at this time. If there's something you wish to add, and Mr. Hicks, both of us will keep our eyes out.
I'm watching, waiting.
All right.
Windows full.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item is a COVID-19 update. Chief Elmore, I know you've got some guests here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have Dr. Mark Swancutt with Fulton County Board of Health, and also have Mr. Doug Schuster with the Atlanta Fulton County Emergency Management Agency. They're here, they're going to provide us with an update of COVID and the COVID vaccine.
Thank you very much for being here, gentlemen. The floor is yours.
Can you forward two slides, please? Dr. Swancutt, take it away.
Okay, I'm just, so, as you're probably aware, the situation with COVID-19 is actually improving vastly all over the United States, and it, after our last peak in January, and it is improved, we had a few bumps along the way, but it is now on a very steady decline down. And as you can see, up in the, so I'm going to go through this just to, since I'm used to looking at this, and everybody else is probably not. In the upper left, we look at the cumulative counts in Fulton County divided into north, south, and Atlanta. And as you can see, actually, more of the newer cases have transitioned toward the south, but the southern part of the county rather than being in the northern part of the county. But the cumulative case rate has been pretty much consistent. The major thing is that we are in fact going down in all of the areas of county, and since we're in College Park, I'm going to point out that over the last 14 days, as of the last reporting period, which ended on the 25th of May, there was a nearly 80% decrease in the number of new cases that were reported. So this is pretty significant. Next slide, Doug. So I will orient you to this. Around metro Atlanta, there are five health districts. Each one of them are coded in different colors here, just so that you know. The blue says Decatur's actually DeKalb. Green says Lawrenceville, I think that's actually Gwinnett, Newton, and Rockdale. The red one is us. It says Atlanta, but it really is Fulton County. But what you can see is that we had a peak in the early January, which came down. There were a few bumps along the way, but has been gradually decreasing over the last, oh, several months, and has finally started to decrease further, so that we're very close. We're actually below the trough level that we were between the summer peak and the winter peak, and we're at levels that is, are equivalent to what we were in March or so of last year, March, April of last year. Next slide. Um, this is a hotspot map. This is what we use to look at where we have the most cases. And I'll try again and orient you. The left-hand side is confirmed cases per 100,000 according to different zip codes. I probably should have my glasses on. And, I mean, I know where College Park is, and so, actually, there were fewer than 10 cases in that area, in that zip code area last, in the reporting period. But you can see on the right-hand side, there's a hotspot map, which is color-coded, and it goes from green being cold, which means no cases, to orangish, meaning a higher concentration of cases. I just let, although it looks like there, it's really hot in and around Atlanta, and southern Fulton County, that orange scale has gone up to as high as 80 or 90 before. So, upper limit of the scale of 10 is actually a drastic decrease from where we were in January. So this is, the reason they change the scale every so often is to allow us to compare one area to another. So we use this to sort of target testing originally, as well as target, hopefully target vaccine efforts. Next slide. Because Fulton County does not exist in isolation. We do in fact have a fairly integrated metropolitan area, and you can look at the five major health districts. And so you see the Marietta District and Fulton, and Compton, and Clayton, and DeKalb. And you can see that there's actually patterns that arise where areas in Fulton County go into DeKalb and follow into Gwinnett, and then areas that go south into Clayton. So these also have been going down in intensity, but again, these are hotspots. So, next slide. This is actually quite remarkable. I'll just make a few comments as an aside on this as well. We haven't had any flu reported pretty much over the winter period, where usually we have a flu epidemic of some sort. I mean, we have a flu season. We really haven't had a flu season this year. We haven't had a flu season in Georgia, and we haven't had a flu season nationwide. The dark, dark green is like no flu at all. We're a little bit lighter than that. We have a little bit more right now, but we, there's a threshold that defines an epidemic. We are not above it. So, most of the time, we're in the dark green, but for the last couple of times I've looked at this, we've been a little above that, but we are not having flu this year. Probably has something to do with vaccines, but also with masks. Doug, next slide. Is this where you're going to take over?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Swancutt.
Do you have questions? If anyone has any questions for me, I could answer them now, or we can also, I can also, I'll hang around the whole thing, and then we can answer some at the end.
Okay, why don't we let Mr. Schuster do his presentation, and we'll just answer any questions that the body has for either one of you at the end.
Great, so thank you, Dr. Swancutt, and it's most definitely, we had no flu season, and the mask-wearing really saved us during the month of January. Our hospitals would not have been able to take a normal flu season here, so masks really saved us there. I'm going to give you a little bit of updated numbers here. We crossed the half of, this is vaccines delivered by Fulton County Board of Health and their auspices. There are vaccines being delivered at hospitals and by private companies, but we're tracking here is what we've done through the Board of Health. We crossed the 5 million boundary on Friday, I mean, excuse me, 500,000, a half a million boundary on Friday total overall. And today, our last day at Mercedes-Benz, we crossed the 300,000 boundary, and at 4,700 in the north. I want to bring special attention to GICC. As everybody in this room well knows, that we struggled to find a good location early on, and we could not have done near of what we've done without partners with College Park, and what we've been able to accomplish at GICC. And we're going to continue to work there through the 26th of this month. A lot of people with second shots coming from Mercedes-Benz and continue to work in the neighborhood. We've also partnered at GICC with Children's Hospital of Atlanta, and so most children with disabilities that have been vaccinated through Fulton County have been done at the GICC location, and they have done, been such great partners, and I want to just take the opportunity to thank you all for that partnership. Our mobile units are closing in on 35,000. We expect our Southern Spocks, including GICC, by the end of next week to be at 75,000 vaccines delivered, which is just really kind of incredible. Next slide. This is a great slide. It kind of takes us from the beginning of our vaccine deployment to where we are today, and it's a weekly total. The orange are the Board of Health totals per week, and the blue line is our mobile solutions. We also realize that we want to remove all barriers, and so using mobile opportunities to get out into the communities, I'm going to kind of show you where we're targeting. Most are within the southern part of the county, and so that we can make sure that we're removing all barriers, whether it be time of day, or just availability, or just getting into the neighborhoods where we need to get into. But as you can see, early on, we did not have vaccine supply, and we were maxing out for like the first 13 weeks, and then vaccine became plenty available, and we opened the Community Vaccine Center. One thing I want to say about the Mercedes-Benz Community Vaccination Center is of the national FEMA vaccination efforts, we were the only FEMA site run by locals, and Fulton County is very proud of that, and we also, of all the federal sites, had the three highest single-day totals compared to the rest of the country. So, pretty proud of that effort, and we, like I said, we tied business up here today. But you can see that once what we call the enthusiastic vaccinated, generally after Week 20, our demand, both at our fixed sites and mobile sites, has started to shrink, and we knew that that was And we knew that that was the that, you know, that was going to be the easy part. Getting the next 15% is going to be the difficult part. And so we are constantly working with our teams and as far as getting to the groups that need it, both for equity and also age equity, because right now the younger populations, regardless of race, are the ones that we need to reach. Next slide. Real quickly, I wanted to show you kind of a demographic map and right on this chart, darker colors are good and that's fully vaccinated. And as you can see, if you that the, you know, this really kind of demonstrates back vaccine inequities in parts of the county. And you can see the northern part of the county has much higher vaccination rates and in the southern part of the county doesn't. Next slide. And inversely, the new cases. So i- if you need empirical evidence that vaccines work is that and Dr. Swancut showed you on his first slide is most of the new cases are coming from the southern part of the county. Also, I could tell you that we're at 55 and over. We're over 80% vaccinated for the county and they are now accounting for about 10% of all hospitalizations, when it used to be 70%. So those that are vaccinated are no longer getting sick and filling our hospitals. And so it shows we still have some work to do, especially in the southern part of the county. Next slide. Real quickly, I'm just going to fly through this real quick. This is kind of over time. The 20 day average per case number, you can see Fulton County at the top. The far right hand side is Dr. Swancut alluded to the slow downward trend over the last month or so that has taken us down to that 20 cases per day, which is really incredible. When at one time, when you look, we were at 860 cases in a day for a seven day average. And so that's just pretty incredible that we're down to 20. And then we attribute a lot of this to vaccinations. The state, same type of story, only 247 cases per day. And the United States has even a sharper decline and they're down to 27,000 cases. Next slide. Deaths as a COVID comorbidity, Fulton County averages 1.5 a day. Through most of the winter months, we were closer to six to seven per day. And so that number has started to come down too. And and you can see the state is very commiserate to ours and the United States is starting to drop on their daily death toll also. Next slide. Quickly, I think we're getting close to the end here. This is kind of our daily dashboard. Leading indicator for all this is the demand for testing and that's the slide on the left in the green. And as you can see, as we are vaccinating more people, there are less symptomatic people that are asking to be tested. And so we've gone from about 7,000 a day to about 3,371, which is still a lot of testing. We do great testing in our hospitals and at the universities here. Our testing totals are higher than most places in the country still to this day. The orange is our caseload and you can see it's almost dropped down to nothing from that high of 700 and down to 20 cases per day. And I think the most important metric is in blue, which is our county hospital census. We're at a seven day trend of 98, which we've never been below the hundreds since we started tracking this data. And so we're at our lowest totals there. And I've already talked about the death toll. Next slide. And quickly, we keep a scorecard. This is the last thing I'm going to talk about. And we had many metrics in January. Almost everything we were tracking was in the red, which is just out of control COVID spread. And we get down into the yellow and the green and the blue is even a better metric than the green, which we're getting very close with COVID cases. And the latest positivity rate for Fulton County is down to 1.7. So that number's trending down even more. And I told you about our hospitalizations. Need to get those under 50. Those blue metrics should indicate, according to CDC, that COVID would be under control. And so those are really our new goals that we're shooting for. Next slide. Now I think we're open for questions. If anybody has any, Dr. Swancut or
Thank you to you both. Does anyone have any questions?
Can you hear me? I got lost for a little while.
I can hear you, Councilman Allen. Go right ahead. But now I can't hear you. Uh oh. Are you there?
Frozen.
Councilman Allen, do you want to try putting your question in the chat box?
I don't have any questions. I just lost everybody and I had to come back in through my iPad. So.
Oh, okay. So did you have any comments or anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Schuster, Dr. Swancut, we appreciate your time. And Mr. Schuster, you know, you've you've been on, I think, all the the mayor's meetings that we do the first Friday of the month as well. And I know that you and your team and everyone with the Department of Health has worked tirelessly over the last year to get us to this point. And I just want to thank you for all of your efforts and we have enjoyed being a partner with the county in order to get vacs vaccines and information to to the larger, broader community.
Right. Once again, thank you too. It's been a great partnership. And if anybody has any ideas, events, or anything that you want us to be at, we will be there for you guys.
We certainly appreciate that. I can think of one right off the top of my head.
I was gonna say, thank you also for the the cooperation. And yeah, we I think we're almost there, but we have a few areas where we could, you know, target and improve.
Absolutely. I honestly, when I saw that that map of the county and the level of vaccination on the southern half, when I saw that on Friday, my my heart kind of sank because it's we do have more work to do.
Yes, we do.
But but know that we're a partner with the unit and anything that we can do, we will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is item 6B. It's an update on the AMI billing interface and other related software. Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the monthly update for our advanced meter system. And this and this report is a little bit different from the past. So I will start it with the water meter endpoint replacement. And the schedule is based on the number of endpoints that GE will be sending us. So 250 in July and up to 500 per month until completed. This is not a very aggressive schedule, but we think we can handle this well, especially we got two items in place for our three person meter teams that will help smooth the transition. And one is the mass file transfer software. The North Star are using an app so they can scan the old endpoint of our codes and the new endpoint to the address and automatically load that information to North Star. So that will help eliminate paper generation of meter swaps by the customer service team. The second, the second item that's going to help is we have a new activation tool. I got a picture of it here with the endpoint is the endpoint is just the left of the wire and the activation, our communication device infrared is to the right and it's it's actually mounted in alignment bracket. So all they got to do is is press the buttons and it activates the endpoint and gives the gives the information back that is activated. So this this helps eliminate using the old Trumble unit that we've had used in the past. So, you know, we'd be glad to get these endpoints replaced. Hopefully by the end of the year, they will provide two rates per day and they have a 20 year battery life. And when we want to break down the water usage is in 15 minute intervals. So that will help us even try to find leaks even better. We have about those 200 of those out there already. So we have about 2,800 left to replace. Next page. I thought since it came up last month about some projects in our budget, I thought I would lay out some that that we're looking at in the upcoming year. First is the on-call center assistance. And we want to look at this to help receive overflow calls for our department and customer service or anybody else who would like to use this this call center. I actually have this on the agenda for next meeting for the workshop and in the agreement. So we'll be looking forward to at least giving that a try. I think Hurricane Zeta said we need to say we need to do a little bit better as far as informing our customers about the power outages. Also, the outage management system, which will help during power outages, this is the software that records our power outages and displays them on a system map. But that's just that's just some of the some of the functions of that system. The kind we'll be trying to get is will be the type that will use our alerts from the liquid meters to give the information to us. It won't be a dispatcher sitting down and inputting the system in. So it's got to be that type of system and we'll be looking at later this year. Next page, Gabrielle, distribution automation. We talked about this last month. I actually had a presentation prepared in 2017 to show you how this system works, but we kept removing it from the budget. So this is a automatic switches located on the power lines to help isolate damages and restore power to some of our customers via another feed. And I will go into more detail about that later when we look at into it more seriously. Two, late EV charging stations. We're looking to put those at the Gateway Arena. This is not a major project, but it's something I thought I would note take here. And then increased street and park lighting, adding more lights to our city. We replaced all 2,400 high pressure sun is LED plus the 600 plus purple lights and within adding lights. So we add about 42 already and we intend to keep adding more to improve the lighting in the city. Then our last page is our other date. 16 customers are were contacted about water leaks. And this is a list of the kilowatt hour sales difference from the pandemic, mainly concentrate on the right column. This does not include the data center. And you can see the early parts of this list shows negatives and then now we're showing positives. We still haven't fully recovered. The commercials still are down. If you look at say, May, last year, we were minus 21.8% compared to the previous May. But if you look at this May, we're plus 14.8. So it's still not recovered. But we'll keep track of this and see how it goes. And that's all.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Yes, you, the ability to read or to record water usage every 15 minutes. That will that be available to the customer that they can actually see that history as well?
I think so. Let me check on that as far as the customer portal. I know we can see it, but I'll have to see if it's available to the customer too.
Well, I I have some experience with customers who have simply a stuck toilet. So you flush the toilet, the flapper stays up and it will use hundreds of gallons in a very short time. I know for me, it boosted one month when I had that problem, it boosted me by a kilogallon. And I I know some customers that have had very high usage, which we believe is due to stuck toilet belt. So if we knew, yeah. And so if we know what time of day it was, for example, oh, wow, I go to work at eight o'clock, there's no one else at home. And lo and behold, also during the day, I use this tremendous amount of of water. And that would, I think if we could make that available to the customer, it might help them to diagnose what their problems are. If it's flat and it's just high usage, then it's a drip somewhere.
I know some customers are using the portal. You gave me an alert on one of them and it's good that they are at least keeping up with their usage on that.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Richardson?
Good report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Item 6C and 6D are discussions and updates on the top 10 delinquent property tax and utility customer accounts respectively. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Flor Bradley on those?
Not here.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item 6E, which is the Utility Assistance Grant Program update. Ms. Flor Bradley?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are still awarding utility grant assistance to customers who have come in and met with our staff and completed the application and submitted all the required documents. However, it's still moving slowly. So what we're what we're doing at this point is we will be inserting new flyers into the utility bills. We'll we'll do a mass mailing and sending it sending those flyers out to our customers. We did get some good news as far as our senior citizens, those who stole income is social security or their pension, they are eligible to apply for the grant so as long as they meet all the other criteria as far as Fulton County resident and provide all the required documents. They and they have to basically provide a statement stating that there was a hardship and it doesn't necessarily have to be directly related to income. It can be a hardship where they have to where they had to had their medication mailed to them versus being able to go and pick them up. Or if they had a family member or a child that would pay for their medication and because they that that child was facing a hardship, couldn't no longer support them in that manner, they they could provide that statement and would be eligible for the grant as well. And we did deny some senior citizen applications early on. However, we will be going back through those applications and contacting the senior citizens. So we just received notice from the county, basically letting us know that we are the senior citizens with so income and social security are eligible for the grant as well. So we'll be reaching out to them.
That's great news. Any questions for this floor Bradley?
Well, excellent news.
And if if the council approves, if council ratifies the acceptance of the subsequent CDVG funds, I think that'll make it a lot easier to to move forward in getting those distributed as well. So any other questions? All right. Item 6F is a clear indication that we're getting back to a sense of normalcy. And that's great. It's consideration of an action on a request from the Atlanta Airport District for approval to host a cycling race event, spin the district and related festivities on Sunday, August 29, 2021, from 9:00 AM until 7:30 PM. And I think we've got some of some of our friends on the line. I think I saw them. But I think Ms. Ba is submitted the request, but I think I saw Cookie Smoke on the line. Pretty sure I saw Andrea Town on the line. Is anyone going to speak?
Can we talk?
Yes, absolutely.
Hey, I didn't know if we had volume.
Cookie, I think is here also.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Well, you are absolutely right, Mayor, and good evening to all Mayor and Council. We are so excited to tell you that the revolution is going to return. And we've slated the date for August 29 for the criperium in College Park. It is going to be the exact same area that we have done it in both 18 and 19. Of course, we had to cancel 20. But we will be in and out from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The actual race time will be from 9:00 AM to 7:30 PM. And it is a criterium racing. So it is there's different categories for different levels of cyclists and even children's activities. And we're planning a very action packed day, lots of fun for the whole family. I think several of you have come out before and have seen what we do. And it is the championship conclusion for USA Crips Speed Week, which is really exciting for us to be that championship conclusion. And it will go through the same city block in College Park, situated near the Public Safety Complex. And it's going to include a type of festival of atmosphere, you know, where attendees can grab a beer or some food or check out local great artists. We're not going to be doing the the crawfish boil this time. I think we all enjoyed that, but because it's not crawfish season and we had to move the Uh, because it's not crawfish season and we had to move the dates due to COVID. So we've got other things in mind. You can go ahead and get perfect. So the things that we are requesting from the city are road closures from 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM. Again, the event will be from 9:00 AM to 7:30 PM. We will have movable barriers like we've done in, in the past. And we will hire College Park Police Officers. There will be alcohol sales. Um, and we're just asking for approval to host the event on the city streets and in the requested parking areas. Um, it's including marketing, the outlets that are available for special events. We're going to do banner placements. Um, beginning three weeks prior, uh, including, you know, a banner, street banner right across. Main Street over Virginia Avenue and on the Virginia Avenue Bridge and in front of City Hall, there'll be digital signage. And then we're going to place yard signs throughout the city and in other outdoor, uh, locations. We are also considering street pole banners and we're going to work towards placement of that. Uh, during the event and we will be using the, uh, city parking lot from 6:00 AM to 9:30 PM on Sunday. For all the activities and it would just be, we would need for the city to block off that lot Saturday night, the 28th. From preventing any vehicles from parking overnight. And, um, there will be restaurants placed in the lot on Friday. There will be dumpster and trash cans for the event. There will, we will need two 60 amp power services. Excuse me just a moment. Got a little tickle. Um, two 60 amp power services. One by car charging stations and one by the mayor, the main power panel. And then a barricade for public safety lot beginning on Saturday evening. We will possibly use fire hydrant water tie-in on the hydrant that's located closest to Princeton Avenue on College Street. In the area with a water meter provided. And then we will also need approval for alcohol sales via our restaurant partner, The Corner Grill, which is who we've used in the past. And we will need assistance with communicating roadblocks with MARTA. In order to ensure that they can reroute their buses. And this is just a little bit about Speed Week. Um, it's quite an accomplishment to be the championship for the end of this. This is in its 15th year and the USA Crits is a. Premier cycling event. I'm not going to go through all that. Uh, you all can read that. I know. Um, Ken and some of the other folks are familiar with, um, USA Crits and we are just very excited. To host an event live and in person. I will also tell you, the first year we did this event, we had about 90 cyclists. The second year we did it in 19, we had, uh, 250 cyclists representing 23 states and 13 countries. So it really gives us an opportunity to put ourselves on the map. So. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Any questions for Ms. Smoke? For Ms. Town?
I, I do, a mayor. Welcome Cookie. It looks like you guys, uh. Pulled off a real coup.
Yes, we did.
Uh, the question I have is one that's come up before, uh, and that is. I have residents in the Lindsay and the Longino buildings, uh, on Princeton and on the cross street that, uh, comes across from it. And, uh, we have tried in the past to make sure that these people have, someone has their. Feedback turned on. Could we turn that off, please?
I think it might be Councilman Allen, because I think you got two things going on there.
I'm gonna do it. I'll try to turn back in again.
Okay, it looks like we're good now. Uh, so I've had, over the last couple of times, we had complaints from some of the residents there. That they couldn't get in and out of their building regularly. I remember one, uh, gentleman who does maintenance for the Housing Authority. Indicated that he had to park his truck and, and, uh, walk a good, I don't know, half mile it sounded like. Uh, in order to get to where he needed to go to do maintenance. So I would like to task Mercedes with the responsibility to organize a kind of lessons learned. Between the, uh, criterion organizers and the police department. And figure out from the lessons learned in the past, what could we do better? To give these people better access during it. I, I'm very happy to be getting the event here and I know it's only one day. But, uh, you worry about emergencies. Uh, these are elderly people in, in the, both of those buildings. And I just want to be sure that. I would like to know, I'd like some feedback from Mercedes as to what is our goal in response time? In other words, someone says. I want to get my car out and go to the grocery store. Uh, how long will it actually take them? To actually be able to do that? Or if not. Is there a service that we could provide them? For example, could we provide Lyft or Uber or somebody that would meet them? Maybe at the corner of Princeton and College or something like that. That could, could do something to facilitate egress and ingress.
Sort of an opportunity to offset the impact.
Yeah, because it's really tough. I, I enjoyed the, some of the race myself, the last time we held it. And those guys are really going and you don't really want to interrupt. You don't want to interfere with their race because that's. Going to interfere with their time, but yet somehow you have to get the residents in and out of their driveway. And, uh, I, I, I'd like Mercedes could follow up on that and at some point I'd like to hear the result.
And, and Councilman, if I could interject, this is Andrea Town. Um, I would love to give some, just a little bit interim feedback for everybody. Um, and then we, of course, will be happy to work with Mercedes to work through it, but, um, we do have a multiple step process, um. To notify all the businesses and residents in the area. Um, we hand out flyers a couple of weeks before the event and then we'll follow up. The week of that with a second round of flyers. The second, um, thing we do is each road closure has staffing there. Um, there, no one will have to or should have to. Wait more than a couple of minutes. All we have to do is, once the bikes, like if they're coming by. You know, the Princeton entrance, once they get past there and on the other side of the course, we open it up. So no one is restricted from coming or going at all during the day. I am not sure what happened in the case of the gentleman you were referring to. But we absolutely will not close down the roads for the entire day. It's, it's a road closure with staffing and police involved. To help open and close as needed. So the longest wait anybody should have is a few minutes to get in or out. In the event of.
What would you say is a few minutes? Are we talking 30 minutes?
Three, no, like three to five max.
Okay, well, uh, what, uh, Andrea, what, what I noticed, and maybe I'm just because I don't know much about criterium racing. But it seemed like there were not just one group of bicycles that was going across around the course. But it seemed like there might be a group of stragglers or what have you that were also there. And, and so I don't know. How much of a window, yes, if there was only one group of moving as a bunch around that course, I'm sure you'd have. Once they passed, you'd have, I don't know, maybe five, 10 minutes to, to get people in and out. But, uh, I thought that I saw some stragglers that you also would have interfered with. So that, that's a. Maybe someone at the Housing Authority could, uh. Could provide more information.
Yeah, we're, and we're happy to, again, we're happy to talk to anybody as needed. Um, in the event of an actual emergency, also just for clarity in terms of. Police and fire, we will shut down the race immediately, um, and stop, like literally stop people on their tracks and we have people positioned along the course. Um, but for the average, hey, I just need to get in and out of my, with my car. Um, that will absolutely has happened in the past and will continue to happen. Um, we're happy to look at better ways to making everybody aware of that, because I, it sounds like. Perhaps, you know, there was somebody who, who didn't feel like they were able to get in and out. So I'm not sure what that's about, but. We will absolutely work through this. Just the nature of crit- criterium racing, one, they're always in town. So it's, they're always set up in downtown locations. The riders are used to this kind of environment. It's not just done in College Park and it's done all over the, the country. So. They're used to that whole city blocks, things shutting down. Um, they have protocols. We are, Cookie nor myself are the cycling experts, but we do have. Um, some of the country's premier, um, organizers that are working on our behalf to make this happen. So. Um, we're happy to address it, but I just wanted to lay any concerns that, that, you know, we are in fact definitely going to ensure that people get it, get in and out. Um, and do our best to notify them in advance and we're open to adding to and improving that process.
Okay, thank you. I think they, the maintenance person at Housing Authority, they had the issue with Mr. Roosevelt, if I remember rightly.
Okay, I will make a note of that and definitely, um, target him in particular.
AT will call him. I have his information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? In regard to the requests that you have for the city, are they any different than the ones you had in 2019?
No, everything's identical. The only exception, as I said before, was we will not do a crawfish boil. We will have other food trucks instead, but it is identical.
That, that is a pretty important exception considering my love of crawfish, but, uh, you know, we'll.
Hopefully next year.
Uh, no, yes, yes.
Little too soon.
Understood, understood. Um. All right. So any other questions, comments, concerns? Um, I believe there was a question about. Uh, if there, have there been any speed humps that have been installed along the route? Does anyone know the answer to that question?
Not on, not on Princeton. Uh.
I rode my bike. I rode my bike around there the other day and there was not any speed humps, but that was like a week or so ago.
Okay.
No, there was no, there's, and there's no plan to install any there. Uh, so it, there is one on Atlanta, but Atlanta's not in the, not in the course.
All right. So. Hearing no additional questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you ladies for coming.
And thank you for having us.
Glad to have some events back.
All right, you'll be excited. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Item 7A is a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. This is the second of the two public hearings scheduled. And this is the final hearing to adopt the budget. Any comments from council before I go ahead and declare the public hearing open?
None.
Hearing none. I declare the public hearing open. If you wish to be heard, Ms. Thornton, can you let people know? Well, if you're not on the call already, um, well, let, let me say, if you are on the call, go ahead and just hit, click your raise hand button. If you would like to log on, you can go to our website, collegeparkga.com and go to the clerks. Go to the Department of the Office of the City Clerk and there's information there on how to log in for the public hearing. So the public hearing is open, Mr. Hicks?
I'm looking.
All right.
Right now.
Let me know if you see anyone and I will do the same.
No one at the moment, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'm gonna leave it open for about another minute or so to make sure. This is the second one. So I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. Uh, if they so desire.
This is the last chance, right?
Right. It feels like forever when everyone's sitting in silence, but it's actually. Been less than two minutes. But, uh, all right. Seeing no comments, I'm declaring the public hearing closed. Item 8A. Consideration of an action on a request for the next three month extension approval of the agreement with Chick-fil-A ownership at 1065 Cleveland Avenue. Allowing a freestanding kiosk on Main Street to sell limited menu items three days a week, Monday through Wednesday, for the hours of 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM and a partner in this city sponsored event to facilitate a marketing study. Mr. Jones, or is it gonna be Ms. Coakley who's gonna be heading up this conversation?
Um, I'll take it.
Okay, good evening.
And Mayor and Council, um, three months ago, of course, um, this came before you all, um, for approval and at that time it was approved and I was also asked to come back. After the trial period of the first three months to see if, um, the, the program was working successfully and if we should move forward with an additional three months. Um, provided in your package was the, uh, amounts of funds that were collected for the first three months. We did have some bumps in the road. First March started off midway of the month. April, um, Chick-fil-A was closed by Fulton County Health Department because they were under the impression that. Store permits, uh, was, uh, okay for the kiosks as well and it was not. So they had to fill out some paperwork and pay some fees and. They were able to start operating again in April. So that's why those funds were there. And then, of course, in May, um, we have those funds. So. I'm before you tonight to request the moving forward for the, the next three months. Um, I did speak with the police department. There were no issues as far as, um, traffic. Hindrances or accidents or anything of that nature. And, um, it's been a happy partnership so far. Um, I believe that. There are several businesses that even support the kiosk, um, even restaurants, as well as city employees who benefit from it, many MARTA, um, riders also. So, um, I just wanted to come before you tonight just to propose an extension of their contract for another three months.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Coakley? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any, any in post? Any abstentions? Hearing none, it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Coakley. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 8B is consideration of an action on a request to authorize refinancing of multiple debt issues. Says Ms. Flor Bradley or Mr. Wall? Or both?
Mayor and Council, um, Doug, no, excuse me, not Doug, but Ed Walsh should be on the line.
I do not see him. Does anyone else see him?
Uh, not that I've noted that he was on.
Madam Mayor, I moved him over earlier. He must have dropped off.
Okay.
I don't see him.
Nope.
I think we know what we're doing.
Well, if anyone has any questions for Mr. Wall, I, I want to make sure that they. Get those answered. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wall?
No, I understand it.
Did he not? Okay. Councilman Taylor, Councilman Gay, any questions for Mr. Wall?
None. Oh, have a question.
All right. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Hi.
If that, that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Item C, consideration of an action on a request to, I'm sorry, I lost my. Consideration of an action on a request for approval to select a bond counsel to provide professional services to the city to issue the refinancing of this existing debt. on an all call basis. Uh, Ms. Flor Bradley has uh recommended uh Mr. Selby of Huntington Andrews Curthie. Ms. Flor Bradley?
Yes, that is correct. Um, quotes were solicited by our financial advisor, Ed Wall, and Doug Selby came in with the lowest uh bid. So we are recommending that the council approve Doug Sel- Selby of um Huntington Andrews and Curthie LLC as the city's bound counsel um on an on-call basis.
He seems to have a good uh history, good resume. Um, I'll move to approve.
Well, hold on one second. Let me make sure. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question. Does that mean that our current bond counsel is no longer with us?
I believe that is the case. Ms. Flor Bradley, is that a yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And what's his contract?
I don't believe he had a.
I don't think he's under contract.
Yeah, it was like on an on-call basis as well.
All right, see. All right.
All right. Any other questions? Councilman Clay made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Item eight D is consideration of an action on a request authorizing the mayor to execute task order number five with Kim Lee Horn to provide professional design services for water and sewer relocation designed for Road Street. Any questions for Mr. Jones on this one?
What fund is this paid out of?
Well, what there there are more more questions than I could, we could take at once. Councilman Gay?
What fund is this paid out of?
Um, I believe this is coming from the TAD uh fund balance.
Right.
Is that correct, Mr. Jones?
Yes, that is correct, the TAD fund balance.
The it that the cover is a little misleading in that it 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 implies that we have a negative balance in the fund, which is true because we have uh money that we owe back to uh Fulton County. But as a matter of fact, I I asked a question beforehand. Um, we actually have something like $400,000 as I remember it in in that fund. So it's, we have cash and the payback of what we owe Fulton County is agreed to be done by us only getting half of the income that we're supposed to get for the TAD over the next several years. It's believed to be four years and it'll be paid back, but we'll still be getting income. And if for some reason we had a bad year, let's say COVID resurged, we simply would get less revenue in and we'd pay less back at that time. So it's kind of the payback period is kind of open ended. So there is, there is no problem with having the money available uh to cover this.
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Item eight E, consideration of an action on bids received for the annual power, power line right of way tree trimming contractor. For some reason, that just sounded like, like it was like a tongue twister there for a second.
A motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, that was all four of you. Thank you, gentlemen. That was unanimous. Item eight F, consideration of an action on bids received for the annual power line construction contractor. Any questions?
I move to approve. No, I, it's good.
Okay, all right. Uh, Councilman Clay has moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Gay, all those in favor?
Hi.
That's all four of you again. Thank you, gentlemen, unanimous. Item eight G, consideration of an action on a request for approval of solid waste disposal services for residential and commercial solid waste. Sarah, motion?
I'm so moved.
I heard Councilman Allen first on that one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item eight H, consideration of an action on a request for approval to upgrade the city's emergency warning sirens. Motion on this one?
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Clay.
I got my questions answered. It sounds like a good system. Uh, we just may need to make sure that it's thoroughly tested uh to make sure that what they have in the uh parallelogram or whatever they, the multiple overlay of the of the tornado or whatever is coming is practically in there as with the proper coordinates and our sirens are in there with the proper coordinate. So hopefully it's going to be well tested and it sounds like a great innovation.
It will, sir.
All right.
Thanks.
Ms. Fornes, I not, okay, hello?
Mayor, this is Chief Elmore.
Hello. Give me, Chief, give me one moment here, because Councilman Clay did make a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
A second and with a question.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilman Gay. Um, do you mind if I let Chief Elmore say what he was going to say? Okay, go right ahead, Chief.
I think early on, uh, Councilman Clay had asked the question regarding the maintenance agreement on the software. And I just received that agreement this evening from the city attorney. And he said it's it's good to go. Um, but he just wanted to make you all aware. Um, I think it would be an additional $1,600 a year about the state.
Ah ha. Okay, I wondered about that.
Right, that the it is $1,600 annually. Um, and that was all part of um the bid in there.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fornes, can you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, I am Sharon Fornes with MCA, Mobile Comm of America, based here out of Atlanta. And on the call with me, I have Patrick Madrid and Lance Munter. They're they're uh our mass notification subject matter experts for the um sirens. And uh, and if you have any technical questions or or want to talk about the $1,600, um, now's the time to do it.
Any questions?
Well, I I I guess the only thing I'd ask uh is uh because we've dialogued back and forth and you answered my questions. The $1,600, if if we move a siren for some reason or or update it, I got from your answer that you gave me earlier that that would be covered at under this normal maintenance of the sirens. Is that correct? There not, there not be another programming charge every time we move a siren, not that we're going to move them, but.
Yes, sir. This is uh Lance Munter. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if if you're talking about moving a siren within the software, yes, sir. But not physically coming out and moving a siren, relocating it uh from one location to another. No, sir, this this is for the software only. We we will monitor the software. We will get on, fix any bugs, any issues there. If you do want a siren relocated within there, but we will get the GPS coordinates for for their current unit.
Right.
Location, yes, sir.
All right, let me interject for one second, because Councilman Gay had a question way back there, and I I don't want to, I don't want to lose that. I apologize. Councilman Gay?
Okay, three quick questions. Will the existing location stay the same for the sirens? And two, what are we going to do with the sirens if we are going to replace them? And three, will we be adding any additional sirens?
And would you like for me to address that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, no siren is is being relocated. They're they're all staying in the same location for this contract. We are upgrading all but one. Uh, you 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 purchased, I believe, what what is the number, Sharon? I apologize, I don't know the total number.
Figure six, aren't there?
Yes.
Six, yes. Six, okay, so uh one was was purchased at a much later date and it did not need to be upgraded. This is upgrading the electronics in the siren of your five that were were uh no longer part supported or anything. So all your electronics in your cabinet is going to get get replaced where you're you're at the latest production model. In this contract, there's no no additional sirens being quoted. This is just the software and upgrading the the five units that were out of part support and were were older technology that was needed to be updated, because if they went out, we could not repair them anymore.
Right. But the the other thing that the point you were making clear was that if 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 we move this, I I mean, you're going to move the siren, but there would be no charge on the software side to reprogram the geocoordinates of the siren if we move it.
You are correct, sir.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passed unanimously, unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight I is consideration of an action on a request to ratify approval of the acceptance of CBBG COVID three CARES Act funding from Fulton County in the amount of $110,000 for phase two emergency utility assistance.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Item nine A, consideration of an action on a request for approval for the Atlanta Airport Rotary Club to route funds donated for the Mayor's Ball held on November 15th, 2018 as scholarships to students entering college or technical schools. Ms. Miller?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. As requested at the last meeting, I did speak with the Rotary Club and they are going, um, they will accept the funding. The scholarships will be given out by the Rotary Foundation and as soon as it is it is approved, the applications would be on the website.
Any questions for Ms. Miller in regards to that information? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Councilman Gay, that was you on the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
I abstain because I'm a member of the Rotary.
I was getting there. I was, I was, I was going to ask if anybody abstained, but all right. So are there any opposed? All right, and Councilman Allen, you are abstaining. So that is uh council members Clay, Gay and Taylor in favor. Councilman Allen has abstained. The motion passes. Item, thank you. Item nine B, consideration of an action on a request for approval of revisions to the city of College Park purchasing department policies and procedures.
I move to approve since we all discussed it at the work session and all thought it was a great effort.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. I think it's Councilman, I think I heard Councilman Allen first. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, I heard all four of you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, item 10A is the permission for a helicopter landing on Badgett Field.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Excited to bring this to you guys. Um, we are partnering with Thomas of Air and we've got Lieutenant Christian Hunt from Atlanta PD. We've got an aerospace awareness camp that started June 1st and running through July 9th at the Brady Center. And um I'm going to allow um Thomas to come on and tell you what they're doing and give you a little information of what we're trying to coordinate for a landing for a helicopter on the Badgett Field for those aerospace awareness um um kids taking camp with us. So um Thomas, you got an opportunity to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I thank for your time tonight. So I developed aerospace awareness uh to provide students with the confidence and leadership skills and basic fundamentals of aerodynamics and aeronautics. And the way I presented to the students is in a fun, you know, practical environment. It's it's basic aeronautics. Uh, we introduced them to various pathways and career opportunities in the field of aeronautics and aerospace. So landing of the helicopter on the field, I think would have a positive act on the students, you know, as well as the surrounding uh community. A lot of my guys, uh, they're not aware of any aerospace or career opportunities they could get involved with in aeronautics. And they're actually excited to be learning about these things and they're learning structure, they're learning more confidence. Uh, promote the guys and they actually strive and work harder. So I think landing the helicopter would really give them that good foundation of, hey, there are these opportunities, you know, right next door. Uh, and if I just want to present that to them.
And then we've got Lieutenant Hunt, who is with the Atlanta PD that's um coordinating this. So we're super excited about that. Um, Lieutenant Hunt, you want to add anything to to the um, the request?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council members and staff. So I'll be teaming up with uh these uh individuals, uh Director Johnson and such to help facilitate this flyover and meet and greet with uh our aviation team. Uh, on that date, we'll have three officers, one pilot, one tactical field officer and myself available to answer any questions that they may have uh concerning the helicopter and what we do on the police department.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you, Lieutenant Hunt. So are there any questions? We're looking at June 15th, one to two on Badgett Field is our request. Um, and I guess they're studying specifically the um Phoenix helicopter. I'm not so familiar with helicopters. Is that correct? Thomas, we're looking at the Phoenix, what they're studying?
Yes, we're studying uh aircraft and helicopters. We're on the instrumentation portion of the training, so they will be able to identify certain components of that helicopter or any other helicopter.
We have to get FAA approval.
So since we're so close to the airport, in fact, our hangar is actually at the Delta South uh Airport. But at your facility, we're a little bit closer. Uh, my pilot in command will get that clearance and we'll be good to go.
Any other questions?
And well, I I I have a comment. I I I know you guys know what you're doing. Uh, if the wind is from the east, planes on landing on runway eight left come in about 200 feet over Main Street, and that's probably about a quarter of a mile from Badgett Field. I'm the guy who tracks aircraft from the city, among other things. So I think it's a fantastic program and I excited and I might even show up for the helicopter landing.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes, um, I I have a question. I want to know how many kids you guys have in this program? And how how long have y'all been doing this in College Park?
Uh, right now, we have 15 students and this will be our second week at the Brady Center.
Yep, so it's a first, it's a new partnership, so we're super excited with the recreation.
Yeah, amazing, amazing. This is really great.
I think it's an awfully exciting opportunity. Any other questions for the gentleman? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Looking forward to that.
Thank you, Lieutenant Hunt. Thank you, Thomas.
Item 10B is consideration of an action on uh intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County in regard to the T-Splosh. We we got this information a little earlier today. Any questions?
A question. I wasn't clear. Does this T-Splosh mean that we give a new uh list of projects or these projects that we've already considered?
Mr. Myers, do you want to clarify? Are you on the line?
I'm on the line. I was trying to get on. Uh, these are uh, these are a new list that's going to be voted on in April 2022.
I think it's actually November.
Or November 2020, I mean, this year.
This this November, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
2021, November 2021.
2021, yeah, I got a lot of dates. Yes. So while instead of earmarking, so to speak, I guess that's the new buzzword going around. Instead of earmarking, I tried to look at where we could do quick responses in there. And when we get our first uh $5 million, we should be able to move those wherever the mayor and council would like for those projects to be seen in the future.
So right now, we're just asking for approval to accept the money, right?
We are asking for approval to enter into the IGA. Uh, so uh with the terms laid out therein and the project list that has been uh added as well.
Attached.
Attached, attached to it, because we need to have that into the county, I believe, by the 15th. Is that, is that, or the 18th? I can't remember which.
Yeah, that's right.
Can I clarify my question?
Yes, sir.
The project list. When did we create that list and is there opportunity to add projects?
Well, the opportunity, that's why I did quick response, Councilman Gay. So we didn't get strapped for that. What they did to us is that, you know, we're, we're working through some other policies with the House Bill 368 that we want to be able to utilize it on other projects. So if we put it down, it kind of holds us feet to the fire. So that's why I went with quick response. So there, so we can put any project down there that we want to do in the years, in the next five years.
So in June, there's no projects, just a quick response category? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we got quick response. And then as you noticed there, we got Road Street, which is in the Sixth West area where we're trying to do some road construction over there. And hopefully by the next five years, we'll be able to collect enough money to be able to work on Sixth West.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Miller?
Yes, ma'am. I would like, if I could get approval from the mayor and council for the budget because this is our last budget hearing, so that we can move forward.
So you're, you're saying we should have done that when we, I wondered about that because usually we have a second item on the agenda for the approval.
Right, there wasn't one.
I, I will move to approve the budget as presented at the budget, second budget hearing.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are moving on to City Attorney's Report.
Didn't we skip the purchasing policy approval?
We already did that.
It will prove.
We proved that. Yeah.
I'm out of, I'm out of sync. Never mind. Sorry.
City Attorney's Report? City Managers Report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Reporter Mayor and Council, we'll start, we'll start backwards. Well, we'll start in, in descending order, but not, we'll start in descending order. Councilman Gay?
It's good evening. Great meeting. I have a few items I would like. We have a, we'd like Renee Coquelin to look at purchasing banners on the part of Roosevelt that was changed to Main. If it's not a lot of banners, if it's just a few banners, just to give that, that name change some identity, please. I'm sure the Ms. Miller office can help us with that. The second thing is that I met with the Chief Kuzanak and the city manager. He talked about a police trailer that has cameras on it for our issues on Cavan Road. We would like to look at what that would cost and bring it back to us. And the third thing is that highway and streets we've met out on site. There seems to be an issue amongst my residents on which creeks are or are not the city's responsibility. We, I understand that there may be a stormwater map that we need to bring and discuss which streets, which creek beds are or are not our responsibility. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen?
First of all, I just wanted to wish Officer Ivory Morris well. And congratulations to Ms. Willis. I want to thank Chick-fil-A for their program that they gave to our employees last week. I thought it was a fantastic program and I hope all the employees enjoyed it as much as I did. Last thing, Prince has some small streets over there. And if people park on both sides, you cannot get a van or a delivery truck down the streets. So I've had the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief look at it. We're going to be coming to Mercedes and some other folks and looking. If you park on both sides, I think you would have trouble getting a ladder truck down for those three-story townhouses. So Mercedes and Jackson, I'll be coming to you to talk to you all a little bit about that probably sometime this week. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Taylor?
Yes, I too want to give congratulations to Ms. Willis for her accomplishments and doing good things and showing young ladies, you know, that is, is the showing young ladies is a good thing that she's doing in College Park. And I have one other thing. In 2900 Camp Creek, we had a fire and displaced a few people on Thursday. I'm going to be out there tomorrow collecting whatever we can collect for the people in College Park in these 2900 Camp Creek. But I wanted to see, I don't know if this, if we could do anything like this, but a lot of people do not. For some reason, they just not getting this renter's insurance. But when it's time for a person to go to a hotel, I wanted to see if it was a way that, you know, like we could get a discount for people that have to go to a hotel, like Red Cross gave them like $500. That's only going to last three or four days, a hundred dollars a night. You know, so just in case this happened again, because it's around the season and we didn't have a way or any kind of way we can get to something like that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Clay?
Yes, Mayor, I have three items. They all pertain to Main Street and if Renee is still on the call, I think she is, she can chime in. The first one is that we've had issues with, with litter on Main Street and I think we've gotten some better support just recently on cleaning up the litter. But we've talked about putting in some signs on Main Street. And there's two types of signs. One type of sign would basically say, please help keep our city clean. And show that's a typical picture symbol of someone throwing something into the waste basket or the trash can along Main Street. A second sign would basically say, this is the fine for littering. So one is a soft approach, one is a, well, the hard approach. And Renee has indicated that we have people that come into some of the restaurants there and they take it as an opportunity to clean out their car. Those are the people that I think the second sign applies to. If you're litter, you're going to get fined. The first sign is more for the people that, oh, I grabbed a candy bar and I dropped the wrapper. I'm a kid. Not a big deal. And you remind them, hey, you know, this is a place to put the things into the litter basket. So that's one thing. I know they can do it, staff can just do it, but I thought I would bring it up to council and see if anybody had any objection to us posting those kinds of signs. And I think Renee, we were talking about putting the the soft sell approach sign on the ask actual baskets themselves. And you need help from Public Works with that. Well, you need help with Public Works for both of them. And the other signs, the littering fine kind of side, you would put on maybe one per block or something like that. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then also a staff person has been or has been interviewed and I think has been hired for Main Street and Virginia Avenue cleanup. So we will have a, a staff person specifically for those areas. So that will drastically improve the area. But we're also looking at a, a combined, a combined approach with the Alliance, the Atrropolis Alliance. So I think we need more of a program to facilitate this, to get it, the mindset of people change, not just putting up a lot of signs on Main Street too, so.
Yeah, well, that, it's a coordinator. Who, who is going to run that? You?
I, I am on the committee, the same gentleman that did the core values. I know he was kind of heading that up as well. There, there was a committee that was created, so.
So really what we're looking for tonight is awareness. So council knows what we're doing. I know Main Street's in Ward One, but Main Street is everybody as well. And if people have objections to this, this is the time to hear them. Okay, hearing no objection. Let's go on. One thing we've talked about in the Main Street meeting was some way of taking a percentage of money that comes from the success of Main Street, of the restaurants and businesses on Main Street, and plowing that back into Main Street. And what, I know there's certain things, I've already explored the legal possibilities. But if we were to say that when we do the budget, if we were to take a certain percentage, I just want council to think about this. I don't, we don't need a decision on it tonight. But if we were to take a certain percentage of the occupation tax in the Main Street and Virginia area, the downtown area, and plow that back into improving the area through, for example, facility, facade grants, I'm sorry, facade grants. That's something I'd like the council to think about. And if you have any strong reaction to it, it is fine, bring it up now. But I think it's a way, if the businesses aren't successful, then the money goes down. If they are successful, and I would say that with Renee and the board, Main Street is doing extremely well. And it's almost becoming an embarrassment of riches because we have traffic situation on Main Street, which hopefully the parklet will help with. So I just want to make council aware of that. And if you, anybody has a strong objection to that, this is a good time to speak up. Any problems? Okay.
Two for two.
The last? Pardon?
Said you're two for two on silence.
I'm two for two. Well, this is my third try, so we'll see if I hit one. Main Street Association, not the businesses. But if, if Main Street Association is promoting something like Rekindle and what have you, we'd like to have a sort of a standing operational procedure that those things can be posted on the LED board in front of City Hall. Now, we've always said we're not going to hype individual businesses on that particular billboard. But it's another thing to say, well, we've got an arts festival or we've got Rekindle or we've got something, maybe the Criterion. Would be something to put on there. I don't know. Maybe that's not quite a city-sponsored event per se. But whether you rule it or not, does anybody have a problem with that, putting things on there? I've discussed it with Gerald. I don't think he has a problem with it. Does anyone else have a problem?
I don't know why we wouldn't promote those sorts of things. I mean, even the, even the Criterion, because we want people to come, see it, spend time in College Park, fall in love with it as much as we, as much as we love it in, that, that's the whole idea, right?
Right. So I, I think, I think these all are pretty much no brainers, but just want to run it by everybody. And that's all I had.
All right. I've just got a couple of things myself and most of them are just echoes of what's already been said. If you were listening in the beginning with the Fulton County update, June 26th is your last day to get vaccinated at the GICC. And they are doing walk-ups Tuesday through Saturday from 10 to 3:00. So please make sure you get out and, and get vaccinated. Continue this move towards normalcy that we're, we're, we're moving towards. It, it's really disheartening to see that map and see how, how much the southern half of our county is lagging in vaccinations in comparison to the north side. We can do this. We can make sure that our community is protected and each, everybody has to do their part. So please make sure you get over there by the 26th. I want to send my thanks on behalf of a grateful city for everything that the College Park Police do on a daily basis. They get up every day and go in the direction of danger and that was clear this weekend in regard to a call investigator Morris received and he is on the road to recovery and we wish him nothing but the best. And we are so grateful for his service to our entire community. Want to thank Chick-fil-A for coming and doing customer service training with the entire city staff. It is really exceptional. I mean, we have the, the customer service leaders in our backyard and within our city limits. And we are so grateful to them for coming out and sharing a few tips. And also, part of that conversation, Dr. Baker introduced the new ethics hotline for our city employees. And so I think everyone got information about that. We want to make sure that if you see something, say something because we are not just putting these core values up behind us so we can have them behind us. We, we want to live them each and every day. And part of that is with every single individual who touches this city and the responsibility that we all have to uphold those high ethical standards. So I think that's all I've got. I think we have some motions to come out of executive session. So is there a motion in regard to cybersecurity item A?
It's, the girl next door. So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Is there a second on cybersecurity item A?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, gentlemen. In regard to cybersecurity B, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous as well. I believe Councilman Gay actually has stepped out, though. So we got councilmembers Clay, Allen, and Taylor on that one. And I believe the, the motion, the cybersecurity issue A as well. Cybersecurity issue D, is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And that is the three of you, Clay, Allen, and Taylor as well. Is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Taylor. All those in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. That's the three of you as well, Clay, Allen, and Taylor. So that is all we've got. So I want to thank everybody and hope that you have a great next two weeks. We'll see you on the 21st.
Yes, we don't have a council meeting, the first meeting in July.
That's right. So we'll, we'll see everybody June 21st and then, then there's a bit of a break.
After that, we got a long hiatus.
That's right.
Line 19.
That's right. And, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Take care, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.